Everyone. Calling to order, the Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Hingham, January 8, 2019. Like to wish all of you a happy new year. Hope it's going well. Approval of the minutes. Entertaining motion to approve the minutes of December 18.
So moved?
Let me ask you a second because I was absent from the meeting.
Second. All over the favor.
Hi.
Okay, public comment.
Public comment. I have a public comment. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Selectman Power, thanks for indulging me and agreeing to meet early this evening in my request. As you know from my prior public disclosures, I've been attorney at, an attorney at Ropes and Gray for the past 28 years. I started the day after I get back from my honeymoon, in fact. I made those earlier disclosures in keeping with Massachusetts Conflict of Interest laws requiring me to let the public know about certain client relationships the firm has with the town, namely that Ropes from time to time represents the school committee in respect of certain collective bargaining matters, and more recently, I disclose the firm's representation of Eversource. I want to let you know that effective as of December 31, 2018, I've resigned from the firm to pursue other professional opportunities, and as such, the prior conflict disclosures I've made are no longer applicable. One word if I may about Ropes and Gray. Public service, and in particular, service to one's community, is part of the fabric of the firm. Many of my current and former Ropes colleagues play vital volunteer roles here in Hingham, following the well-worn path blazed by folks like Tom O'Donnell and Nelson Ross. I have tried my very best to emulate their examples, working collegially and collaboratively with staff and volunteers to further the best interests of this community that we love. There is a quote often attributed to Luke that I'm sure we've all heard at one point or another. "From everyone to whom much has been given, much will be required, and from the one to whom much has been entrusted, even more will be demanded." I feel very lucky to have been given the opportunity to practice as a Ropes and Gray lawyer, and I have tried to bring the full measure of myself to that task. In the end, the experience has made me a better person and a better professional, and I will always be grateful for that. Thank you.
We can't comment because it's public comment, so I reserve. Although, having said that, the town's lucky to have you, Councilor.
Well, I'm privileged to be sitting here. I concur.
First up, building. Mike, do you want to join us? Did we want to take them out of order? Did you want to?
Oh.
The fire department?
I'm sorry.
If we could, because I've got to go.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mike. Do you mind?
Sorry, Mike.
Chief. Chief, Deputy, welcome. Always good to see the fire department, especially when something's burning.
Okay, so if you go to the Fire Department's budget, it starts on page 140 with a summary on page 141 of your budget books. I'll give the quick summary, as has been our practice this year, and then the chief and deputy will run through a presentation highlighting their department and its tasks or its mission. Okay, so, in FY '19, the Fire Department, their total budget was $5,639,725. And for FY '20, they're recommending $5,977,046 for a total, with an additional request of $32,000. Hold on just one second. If you go to Roman numeral page, wait for it, 10, you'll see that their total increase over last year is an anticipated $369,321, or 6.55 percent. So if there's no questions on that, I can turn it over to the chief, and he can give us his presentation.
Evening, Chief. Good to see you again.
Good evening. Just a comment on the 6.5 increase. Remember, that is because of the fact that we were previously dealing with FY '17 budget numbers, that we had not settled a contract with the union since the end of FY '17, so those numbers had carried over year to year, so that, the major portion of that is because of that change. So if you look at our budget request for last year with very, very minimal exceptions, everything is just contractual basis. There are some decreases because we did have some retirements, so some, specifically longevity, some of those numbers for the longevity payments decreased now that we have some newer hires into the same positions. But the main bulk of it was, you know, the fact that we hadn't had a contract in two and a half years, you know, so that's why there's such a big increase. Beyond that, with the addition of the $32,000, which we're going to talk about in the budget presentation, everything else that we asked for, for any changes, especially in the expense side, was due to things like increases in fuel costs, increases in, you know, other utilities, so every other item. So even on our salary side, the amount of overtime that we requested, the actual dollar figures changed, obviously, but the amount of overtime hours that that bought us stayed the same. Same thing with our callback, same thing with a couple of other things. Only other category I think that we actually did have an increase in is actually the educational, which we have a few more people with degrees, and we're happy to, you know, do that, and that's just contractual for the amount per each degree. So there's really the, you know, other budget items, I'd be happy to comment on them individually, but like I said, it's all pretty much level, level service from the previous year with the exception of the $32,000, which we'll talk about in the presentation. Any questions on the budget? Okay. You want to get into it? So I'll just, that up on, Deputy DeChesne is actually going to run you through the presentation. He actually, you wrote it. Can we get to the start? All right.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. So I know the chief touched base on a lot of things. We'll go over it briefly in the slides, the presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to stop us. I know at the end, the chief's going to talk about some things. But basically, I know it sounds kind of cliche, but why we're here is we protect lives, you know, save lives, protect property. It's a fundamental principle of any public safety agency, but that's why we're here, and that's what we do. And we're able to do this and support our mission by the people we hire. You know, we hire the best men and women that we can find, train them to do the best job possible. Very professional, they come to work every day, and they do a great job for us, whatever the need. Some of the ways we go about that, you know, fire prevention. You know, obviously fires are down. We have a fantastic fire prevention officer, he's very involved. Some of businesses may not care for him because he follows, he follows the code, but he's doing, he's doing a great job. He's very involved with inspections, and we'll see that in some of the slides on what he's actually doing. Code compliance is a big part of what we do. You know, if we can prevent the fires, then we don't need to suppress them. As of today, we have about 500 residential units under construction throughout the different projects throughout the town. Lieutenant DiNapoli is involved heavily with the Building Department in that, code compliance, inspections, and permits, so he really is doing a great job. Public education, we have a crew of folks who go into the elementary schools, present, do the safe program, student awareness, fire education. We get them at a young age, try to prevent them the do's and don'ts. Public education, we start with the young kids, and hopefully, it goes on from there. But we have a group of four or five folks that go out and do that routinely, and they're doing a great job. The biggest thing we do in the Fire Department, and so I'd say, Hingham Fire Department, is EMS, so it's almost Hingham Fire and Rescue, Hingham Fire and Emergency Medical Services. 60 to 65 percent of what we do is respond to medical emergencies. In 2018, we transported 2,120 patients. Every year will go up, you'll see that in the coming slides. Our population is getting older, and they need more services from us. The firefighter paramedics that we hire provide the highest level of care that can be, can be given in the field. They do a lot of advanced life support skills, EKGs, IVs, medication administration, and early notification to the hospital. If our crews find a problem in the field, they relay that to the doctor and the nurses, and they're able to set up and, you know, be ready for that patient when our crews get there, saving very, very valuable time. So our firefighters are the core of our organization, they make it what it is, and they do a really good job. We talked a little bit about fiscal responsibility. The admin staff really, we have routine reviews, we try to stay within the budget. Obviously, our job is inherently dangerous, so there are things that do happen that are out of our control, long to, OJI's, on-the-job injuries. We've had good years, we've had bad years, where we've had people out. Currently, right now, we have one out on a, on a, on-the-job injury. So that does increase overtime and medical expenses, but other than that, we do, we do keep a very close eye on the budget, we stay within our framework that is provided by the town. Lastly, on the mission and services, kind of in a nutshell, when somebody doesn't know who to call or what to do, they call the Fire Department. And we show up, and whatever the problem is, we find some way to fix it. So we're kind of like a one-stop shopping. So the next slide goes over the numbers for the last, from 2014 to '18. Last year, 2018, has been our busiest year. In total, we did 4,487 calls. So every year, you can see, you can see the uptick, that it is going up, we are getting busier. You can see our medical calls have increased. Like I said, we transported 2,120 people last year, as opposed to the previous years. I mean, that's, that's up, you know, 300, 300 transports. But as you can see on the last bar, our older population is, you know, using the service that we provide.
And there's that new building at London Ponds that's open, so the population is increased by a couple hundred residents.
Absolutely. Then the other projects that are coming, you know, we have, we have a couple of nursing homes, some assisted livings, the memory care unit, then 99 units coming to Peniman Hill. So we're getting busier, population's getting older, so you can, you can see that in our call volume. We are doing more.
Deputy, point of clarification. Ambulance transports versus EMS calls, how are they distinguishable?
So the calls are how many times we're called out for an EMS incident or a call. Not all of them are transports. We might get to a car accident or a medical emergency, and the person decides they don't want to go to the hospital. So we, the data we use in our CAD software that can distinguish, we would dispatch 2185 for medical calls, but we only transported 2120. We might show up, and they just say, "We don't want to go to the hospital."
And is mutual aid a combination of fire calls as well as medical calls?
The mutual aid numbers here are fire and EMS. Most of it is EMS. Hingham runs two ambulances 24/7. Most of the towns we touch do not, so they need help, and we're kind of in the center of that, so we do provide a lot of mutual aid. Last year, we gave mutual aid about 300 times.
And I would just mention, it's, it's not in the presentation, but in the local receipts, next year in the budget, we're looking to get $1,325,000 in ambulance revenue, so, you know, the, what we're seeing here tonight are all the expenses, but we shouldn't overlook that revenue.
Yep, absolutely.
And there is a provision for relief for somebody who can't afford that kind of ride.
Yes, there is. Thank you.
So the next slide touches on benchmarks for the Fire Prevention Division. I will say the 2018 numbers are up until October 31st, they don't include November and December. But Lieutenant DiNapoli is doing a great job. He's, he's issuing permits, going out doing the inspections, he works very close with Mike at the Building Department, Board of Health. Sometimes they'll kind of get together and go out and do a lot of the inspections together. So he's really brought the Fire Prevention to a new level, very involved, he's impressed the chief tremendously, he's doing really good. You see, the, the green bars on the graph, those are in-service inspections, so those are being completed by our engine companies in between, you know, emergency calls. So on average, you know, like last year was about 327 times, those are engine crews going out to residential home sales, doing the inspections on those.
Are those like for the smoke detectors?
Exactly, yep. Yeah. That's pretty much all they'll do. Everything else falls on Fire Prevention, occupancy permits, liquor licenses, new construction type of things, but the, yeah, the in-service inspections are the smoke detectors for the sale of a house.
Does the Fire Department get copied on all the plans that are submitted to the ZVA or the Planning Board with respect to structures?
Yes, yep. They all go through Fire Prevention and the Building Department. Some initiatives we've been trying to do, the chief, the chief is going to be implementing an officer development program. So basically, we have a young department, starting with us, we have a new admin team, the chief, both deputies out of our officer corps, so we have eight lieutenants on shift. Six of them have three years or less as an officer. Great people, educated, very aggressive, good at their job, so we have a time now to mold them. So this is a program the chief and I want to do to kind of implement this going forward. Two, we have four captains, two of them were promoted two years ago, one of them was promoted last year. So all along, our offices are fairly new. So we want to develop this officer development program, far as training, and this goes in to down far as succession plan and kind of the same thing. Mass Fire Academy is a great academy, they offer a lot of great training, and it's free to the town, it's free to the department. We've been utilizing them a lot, they come out to the town, they come out to the fire station, and they'll train, they'll come in and train all four groups. Last year, we had them out six, six or seven times on different topics. They'll come out four days in a row and present the training to everybody. Great program, great instructors, they're highly regarded throughout the country as one of the better academy programs. It's difficult for training for us because we are so busy. We do, while they're on duty, we do the training. We're busy, so sometimes that gets interrupted, but we are doing more training than we ever have. Like I said, you know, the new deputy three years ago, Deputy Powers is now filling that role as a training officer, providing a lot of the programs. The succession planning kind of goes in line with the officer development. You know, Chief Olson got Deputy Murphy ready at the time. Now, Chief Murphy's trying to get me ready. And right down the line, like I said, with the new offices that we have in place, the succession planning and the officer development program are a work in progress, but it is something we are doing. Talk a little bit about the Hingham CERT team. So it's made up of 22 voluntary residents, the Citizens Emergency Response Team. They're very helpful to us, they participate in several events throughout the year, you might see them at the road race, the fireworks, Christmas in the square. They participate in, you know, mass casualty incident drills with us. Last year, we started a new program with them, so now Hingham's part of a regional sheltering program, natural disasters, weather-related events and such. Our CERT team has staffed the Waymouth High School Shelter, the Situate High School Shelter, so when people, they'll open the shelter for two, three, four days in an emergency, our Hingham CERT team, that are Hingham residents, will staff the, staff the shelter. So that has been a big help. Talk a little bit about visibility within the community. I think the Fire Department's always done a good job being visible, we're trying to do more with that. Like I said, you know, the road race, the fireworks, parades, we're involved more now with town, town committees, going to, you know, building meetings with new, new subdivisions or new projects, so we're trying to put ourselves out there, be more visible within the community, which has had a positive impact. Emergency management, that was something I knew very little about coming into this job. Some departments or some towns, it's two separate positions, but the chief does fill the role as the emergency management director for the town, which, separate from the fire chief, they have some similarities, but two different jobs. Very important role. We talked about the natural disasters and stuff like that, evacuation plans, the chief's heavily involved in that. Just today, we had a meeting with FEMA about storms that we had a year ago. So there is a lot of behind-the-scenes, background things that go on that people just don't see, but one of, another important role is the emergency management function. We'll talk a little bit about technology. It's never going to replace firefighters, police officers, anybody, but it will help us do our job, it'll make our job safer and easier. You know, the police have had it for a few years, now we have, you know, computers in the fire engines, computers in the ambulances, which just give us access to information, you know, instantaneously, pre-fire plans, fire hydrants, hazardous materials, it just helps us do our job, doesn't replace our job, you know, but it does, it does help us. Just a couple of months ago, new software for scheduling. You know, hopefully, it makes it easier for our firefighters to request time off, for our offices to fill their vacancies. So any available technology, we try to take advantage of. Like Tom said, this is what we are asking for, we're respectfully requesting $5,533,871 for salaries. Like the chief touched on, that's contractual increases, like you said, we were without a contract for about two and a half years. There is one additional increase to that, which the chief will touch on in the next slide, and we're also asking for $443,175 in expenses. The increase in expenses from last year is utilities. The utilities went up, everything else stayed the same. You know, talks a little bit about the makeup of the department. We're currently in the process of hiring, we're down eight vacancies at the moment.
You just hired two, two new firefighters?
Two a couple of months ago, and we are in the process right now of six people are in, have accepted positions, they're going through the pre-employment physicals and the, we have to go through a PAT test, you know, physical abilities test. So we, our new list came out December, like 6th or 7th or something like that, and we were very aggressive with the candidates, and actually did interviews almost like the day that they returned the applications to us, and we were successful, and be honest about this, we stole some candidates that were potentially going to go to other departments because we acted so quickly. They are not stolen, but we got there first, you know.
Pre-empted.
Yes, that's exactly right.
You know, years ago, it was, you know, like the chief has said, for every one position, you had 20 candidates. It's not like that anymore.
Right, right.
We were very aggressive, we changed our tactics far as, you know, we got the list December 6th or so. We'd probably be doing interviews this week or next week after the holidays. We've interviewed quite a few people, we made six job offers, we were looking for eight, I'm pretty excited about six, you know. I was hoping for at least half, four, six is good, so.
And I think it's worth noting, you know, for the public that, you know, we have, we have manning requirements, it's, we have 13 a shift right now?
11 is the minimum, 13 is the maximum.
Yeah, so, so at any point in time, there are between 11 and 13 firefighters that are taking care of this whole town, and when there's a vacancy, that still has to be, that, that person has, we have to fill the shift. And so that means overtime, which is a premium, or we have to move people to a different shift, and the shift differential sometimes requires a premium.
Yeah, the biggest thing is usually the overtime that we're refilling with, but, yeah, we, it's been a long process because the old civil service list, honestly, there wasn't a lot of candidates left on it, the list had kind of gotten used up. So going back, I think it was around September 24th was the last day that we could have actually requested candidates off of the 2016 list. I requested a list at quarter or four on Friday afternoon, the 24th or whatever the day was, we didn't get anybody, you know, so we were in a limbo, they couldn't even get anyone, even if they had passed their paramedic exam after that time, we couldn't get to them until the 2018 list was established. And unfortunately, even the 2018 list statewide, there was only 269 paramedics on it. So we knew that we needed to be aggressive, and we were, you know, so we still have a couple of spots to fill, but we actually have a couple of other possibilities of how we're going to do that. That, you know, some other candidates that we know that are not paramedics yet, but are very close to become paramedics, that have expressed interest in working here, or some other candidates that may even be in paramedic school that we may be able to get to, so.
I'm just really encouraged by it, not only from a budgetary standpoint, but just the health of the department, frankly, so that's, that's great work.
You know, men and women, they, they work a lot, you know, they really do. And like, like you had said, is, we have 13 assigned, right, I mean, we've been at the minimum of 11 for quite a while now, so between contractual obligations with vacation and, and personal time and such, anytime somebody takes time off, we have to fill that position.
And your call volume has
And the call volume is more than
Has increased steadily over the last five years as your, as your head count, I think in the last couple of years, we've added, I remember adding one position to get every shift to 13, but other than that, so, so basically, we're asking people to sort of, you know, the call activity is greater.
So the final slide we have is just the additional request. So going back to the original budget request, we were requesting $32,000 for a one-time overtime funding for this year. This is to close us and get us completely out of the fire alarm business. So if you remember Chief Olson, not this Chief Olson, the Chief Olson Fire Department, talked beforehand about shutting down and getting rid of the old fire alarm system, which is 1800's technology. We have done that, except for the fact that the poles that are still out on the, the box is still on the telephone poles, and all of the wires still exist. They actually still work, because until we actually go and shut everything down, it's not safe to just discontinue and shut the system down. But by law, we have to physically go and remove every wire, remove every clip that, you know, is on the telephone pole and all that type of stuff. We've been slowly working over the last few years to do that, but our fire alarm guys that work for the department, we have to pay them overtime to do that. And overtime for manning or staffing has taken the priority over disassembling this system. So we keep on telling them, see what you can do when it's at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then we quickly tell them, okay, that's it, you're done, you know, and we'll tell them, well, we'll keep on working on it next year. And it's getting to the point where some of the systems, the boxes that are out there because we're not maintaining them, are not going to work any longer, and people are going to think that they are because they're still out there. And not to mention that we have a legal requirement to, you know, to clean up our work and all that type of stuff. So we're requesting this. I've met with them, actually, Chief Olson put in a similar request, which is, it's a different dollar figure, but it's based on the amount of hours that it's going to take our guys to go do it, and now with a contractual increase, the, you know, amount has likewise increased. But working with them, they tell us that this is going to give them enough time. If we obviously can get the work done without spending the full $32,000, then that would be surplus money that, you know, we wouldn't need, but they tell us that that's going to, that would be enough hours, so.
Is the vehicle, I recall that there is a vehicle, a specialized vehicle, and
Yeah, that's getting older.
We're kind of crossing our fingers that the vehicle's going to last another year.
It's a 1987, I believe, it's either 87 or 1990, and yes, it's, we, we have to maintain certain things with it, because it does have a bucket truck on it, so it still has to be certified to be safe to actually operate, but it, yeah, it's getting very tired. We have no intention of having to, you know, look to replace it if we can avoid it, because it's, yeah.
I think my first year on the advisory committee, which was probably nine years ago, we've been, we've been talking about this for at least nine years, we just got to get it done.
Agreed.
Thank you for including it in your budget.
I approve it.
Thank you.
You good?
Yep, that's our presentation.
You know, I just, I want to echo something that Karen mentioned, and that is that, you know, all of our town employees, everybody does a wonderful job for the town, and I know that, that manning shortages are, put additional strain on the department, not just on the leadership, but on everybody who works there. It, it, it requires a little bit of flexibility from everybody, it's a little bit more demanding, it creates stress in, in what's already a really stressful job anyway, and I just appreciate the professionalism and the patience that, and the continued wonderful work that everybody, everybody in the department does. And it's, it's exciting to hear that, that the staffing levels are going to be up. I, we get, you know, the selection, we get magazines that come to us, and one of them is called like Governing Magazine, and I have it to us, and one of them is called, like, Governing Magazine, and I have it in the back, but there was actually, actually, I have it right here. It's an article about New Day, it's called "New Day in the Fire Service." And this is a national, it's, it's a national thing talking, and, and your story is very similar to what's happening all over the country. And, you know, you alluded to that, only 269 candidates, and a lot of, a lot of fire departments are scrambling. I'm, I appreciate the fact that you've been proactive and really on top of this, and we'll, we'll look forward to welcoming new members to your team. And I would also just say that, under both of your leadership, one of the things that I always appreciate attending are the promotion ceremonies that you're gracious enough to invite the board to. And, you know, promotions are always, promotions are always a significant event, no matter, no matter what your, what your job is. And I, I think it just, it speaks to the fire department that this is done at night, and families come in. And it is just such a pleasure to see mothers pinning on sons or daughters, children, spouses. It really, you know, you're doing a wonderful job building community within the department. And I think those things, we, we appreciate and enjoy them, and we'll, we'll look forward to seeing, to coming to the next one.
Hopefully, we can have one with six candidates all the way.
You're still trying to figure out how they get the engine.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you, you set the bar pretty high with that.
I'm interested, I'm very, I'm pleased and interested in the training that you're going to be providing to your offices with respect to dealing with structures like Avalon and Alliance. I think that's a completely different type of firefighting mission. I'm assuming you anticipate that, you're addressing it with the training that you're undertaking. And I'd also like to compliment your drivers. I watch you guys all the time, and you're driving big trucks through crowded streets, and, you know, you, you get to the call safely. I appreciate that, and I don't take it for granted. So, thank you very much-
Yep.
-to your men and women who wear the uniform and hang a fire.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving to the apartment.
Okay. Let's see.
Yes.
We're a little out of order. I just got to back up a little bit. Okay. Okay, so, Mike Clancy, Building Commissioner, is joining us for the Building Department Budget Review. Clancy, as you know, his department was formerly a part of the Community Planning Department in prior years. As you know, we've separated those departments into, into their own departments, each of those sections into their own departments. And as, as had been done in the past in Hingham, prior to their being combined into Community Planning, we've, we've placed the Building Commissioner's budget within the Public Safety category in the budget book. And that, in, you know, I think that's appropriate. You know, most of what the Building Department does is for public safety purposes. So, in many, many places, they're considered one leg of the, of the public safety stool, an important leg of the public safety stool. So, that said, we, I can speak to, to his budget requests. He's requesting $242,72. I am recommending the same. There is no percent increase or decrease from last year, simply because he was part of, it was, you know, one portion of a, of a much larger budget last year in Community Planning. So, with that said, the community, excuse me, the Building Department budget begins on page 157, with the presentation starting on 162.
If you want to start, it's the right button. There's your go. Go.
Good evening. I just wanted, with my presentation here, just try to figure out, explain some of the topics that we do on an everyday basis.
Thank you.
The Building Inspection Services Department falls under the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety. We enforce a series of international codes, including the State Building Code, Residential/Commercial, the Fire Code, the Existing Building Code, Mechanical Code, Swimming Pool/Inspire Code, Energy Conservation Code, Architectural Access Board for Disabilities, the Zoning Act, Chapter 40A, the Hingham Zoning Bylaw, the Hingham General Bylaw, the Plumbing and Gas Code, along with the Electrical Codes. The building officials are on-call 24/7 and respond when requested to fire and police emergencies for building fires, cars, accidents into buildings, gas and water leaks, and electrical problems. That's just a photograph of some of the codes that we do enforce. Permit fees collected for calendar year 2018 for building sheet metal, certificate of occupancies, certificate of inspections, and final cost after Davids was $1,971,706.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
With respect to the decks at the shipyard on Halsted and Stainer, what's going on?
There was a contractor in there now removing the decks, replacing the back wall that faces the water, that was rotted out, that was not installed correctly. I was not-
Is that on the homeowner?
I believe it's on the, the association there. I was not the Building Commissioner.
I'm not laying it on you either.
No, I just wanted to bring out that, well, when I get down through the presentation here, we do a lot of inspections, and we might go back two or three times.
Okay.
But we do a lot of inspections. But that is an unfortunate situation down there.
Say.
Electrical, plumbing, and gas fees collected were $327,664. Total permits issued, $4,557. Total inspections to date for building sheet metal, electrical, plumbing, gas, zoning complaints were $9,035.
Ask a question?
Yes.
With respect to complaints, if you issue some kind of letter to somebody that they're building or doing something out of compliance with the code, what's, what's your authority with respect to enforcement? See some letter, we could copy it on the letters, in a sense, so.
Sure. Whenever there's a zoning violation or a building code violation, we send a letter out to the contractor or homeowner explaining the situation with the problem. We cite the code section-
Right.
-so they know what we're trying to explain to them. Also, we have to give them a right to appeal, which if it's a zoning question or violation, they have 30 days to appeal the letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If it's a building code violation, they have 45 days to appeal it to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards.
Is that in town?
No, that's up in Boston at 1,000.
That's what I mean, yeah, in town, Boston.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Before Mike leaves the slide, I'd just point out, I was sitting here doing the math. So, in a, in a typical business day, you're issuing 18 permits a day, and you're doing 36 inspections a day. I just, you know, you know, I like to break things down into a daily number, because it just, I think, illustrates the, the, the volume of business that goes through your department on a daily basis.
You, you have third parties on some of these inspections, right?
We used to. They're all in-house.
Alliance and Avalon, are you doing that all?
What we ended up doing there, with Tom's help, we do after-hours inspections. So, it's, it's like a detail-
It's a new program, probably what? You're doing, you're doing that whole thing down there?
No, on some of the, on some of the inspections, but we're, we're treating it like a, like a detail that the police and fire would do. They get a minimum of four hours when they go out, before town hall opens or after town hall closes.
Outside of their regular hours. So, their regular hours are available to do, to work on behalf of, you know, their regular process, but now they're available to fire. Are there any backlog of units to be inspected prior to being rented?
Are there any backlog?
Right. Are you behind on your inspections down there?
No, we're up to date right now.
Very good.
Absolutely.
In large part, potentially, because of that program, because they're allowed to get out there beyond their restricted 35 hours a week, otherwise.
Exactly.
Okay.
The average single-family home requires a minimum of 12 inspections, building, electrical, plumbing, gas, and sheet metal, along with the fire department. The building depart-- this is a little extra on that slide. The building and fire departments inspect and issue over 125 certificate of inspections for liquor establishments and assembly uses, with an occupant load of 49 or more on a yearly basis.
How do you determine the occupant load?
The occupant load is done by the square footage of a, of a room. If you were standing, it's five square feet. If you were sitting in a chair, it's seven square feet. And if you were sitting at a table and chair, it's 15 square feet. Different occupancies, as far as a kitchen, is 100 square feet. A closet is 100 square feet. Mezzanine is 50 square feet, and so on. But that's how you determine the occupant load for, for a building, whether it's a commercial building, a restaurant, town hall, a church.
Some of us require more square feet than others.
This is-
Next slide.
This is a copy of the, a certificate of inspection that is either in the vestibule or near the cash register in front of any other restaurants or assembly uses, churches and things. And it shows, I change the color every year. So, when the police, fire, and building inspectors go in, they know that it's been inspected, and it's up, and it's current. And it has, for instance, the total occupant load, I won't mention the restaurant, but it says bar seats 13, dining room bar 30, dining room 137, total interior 180, 22 exterior.
Are the plans to those buildings accessible to the police and fire?
Yes, they are.
Off-hours as well?
Yes. This is some of the monthly inspection reports. When this went through with the PowerPoint, it did take off some of the actual monthly inspections, but I'm just going to go January of, of this year. We had a total of 583. I'll go to May. We had 771 total inspections for the month. June was 842, August 1161, and August, October, 938, and December, 694.
Does the August reflect gas conversions of boilers, or?
No, no, it's just it, it's ramped up for the summer season and a lot of inspections.
You have a dedicated plumbing inspector?
Yes. He, he does plumbing and gas.
I see, okay.
The next slide is just a summary, summary of 2014 through 2018. For instance, 2014, we did a total of 6,456 inspections. This year, we did 9,035.
And Mike, and if, if you were to compare, like, 18 to 14, is, how much of that increase is driven by the big developments, the Avalon, the Broadstone, the Brio?
I would say it's about, around 12% is the increase for that. However, when the building permits are issued for those large projects, I issue one permit for the entire project.
Yes.
Then I issue individual permits for each unit. And that's how the units are inspected-
Yeah.
-so we can keep track of it.
Sure.
So, for instance, Alliance, I believe there's 220 units.
Yeah.
That would be added to this year's building permits that are actually 1,401. So, that would increase that. But I did not want to do that, because you'll see, once these large projects go away, it'll seem like there's a really big-
Sure.
-decrease in what we do.
Maybe.
Excuse me?
Maybe.
Maybe. This is correct.
Yeah. And how would, just, you know, in terms of your office, how would you characterize the level of, of, you know, the, the residential home improvements? So, you know, the bumping out of the kitchen, or the adding a second floor, or, you know, modifying a small house and creating, you know, creating a larger one? Is, how would you characterize the 2018 activity relative to the past few years?
It has increased, it, it has increased, as far as the, maybe the, the cost has gone up somewhat because of the contractors. They're few and far between now. The average construction worker is 56 years old. There isn't any kids coming out of school to be carpenters or be electricians or, so it's, it's, if you can get a contractor, the homeowners try and lock them in right away.
Mm-hmm.
Because it, it's tough to get good people to do good work.
I notice, for example, when I drive around Crow Point, especially in the summer, you're constantly hearing buzzsaws, hammers, you know, there's a lot of construction activity. I notice, driving along certain streets like Free Street, Hershey Street, you see a lot of small homes that have either been torn down, or that have doubled and tripled in size. And I think I'm, I'm seeing it happening in parts of town where I hadn't seen it. I mean, Crow Point's been very busy for, for the last 10 years, but seeing it in other neighborhoods now than, than what I had seen in the last five years.
Yeah, it's a, Hingham's a desirable town, and a lot of, I call them, the kids are all coming in. And what we've seen over the past three years or so, is they do not want to renovate the home. They would rather tear the home down and build their own home.
Mm-hmm.
Ching.
These are some of the large building projects under construction and proposed. The workers on site during the height of the construction, 230 Beale Street, which is just getting started now, they're out of the ground on one of the buildings. They're working on the foundation of the other. There's 100 workers there now. 10 Shipyard, at the height of that, they had 150 construction workers on site. 319 Leaking Street had 200 on site at one time. Then, Linden Ponds, 210. All of these units were not reflected in any of the building permits on those years. Again, I only issued one permit for each large project. All of those large projects, it's called podium construction, where there's a three-hour rig- rated assembly, where the cars can drive underneath, and then the wood frame is built on top of it. That's the most economical way to build these structures now, out of wood. There is a product out now that's called cross timber construction. It's all wood, and you can go 22 stories high with it.
Is there a wind rating issue there?
It's all engineered. It's coming from British Columbia in Canada, and it's already worked its way into the West Coast, and it'll probably be over here. They actually wanted to do the stairwells at 319 Lincoln Street with that material and the elevator shafts, and I said that they would need a variance from the BBRS to do that.
Didn't comply with code?
Well, under the code, I could have allowed it.
I see.
However, they did not, it has not been allowed anywhere in Massachusetts at the time, so I told them they would need a variance to do that. And they declined and built it out of block walls.
Would the variance go to the ZBA for its consideration?
No, it would go to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards in Boston.
Are you charged with the responsibility of OSHA inspections or anything like that?
The police and fire departments call when there's an OSHA accident, when somebody gets hurt, so I can help them and do the investigating, or one of the other guys would do that. But we are certified with OSHA 10 and OSHA 30.
So you could issue a violation if you saw one?
Yes.
Have there been any kind of workplace accidents? It seems like quite a large number of construction workers.
As far as cuts, bruises, things like that, there was one person, foundation worker, about a year and a half ago at 319 Lincoln Street that fell through the farm that they had constructed to pour the first floor deck. He fell through that. He was pretty banged up, but other than that, we've been very lucky.
Is there a heightened fire code requirement for a wood structure of the size down at the Shipyard?
There is. It's companion, as far as, for instance, 319 Lincoln Street has Tower A, Tower B, and Tower C. And Tower A is separated by a two-hour firewall that goes from the foundation all the way up to the peak. And the same thing with Tower B to Tower C. So they're panelized where the size of the area they have can only be so big with a wood frame construction, even though it's, you know, has sprinkler systems and fire alarm. People think when you put a sprinkler system in the building that it's protected, but it's actually, it is protected from fire, but the wood frame construction, if you put 5/8 sheet rock around all the structural members, that would be considered protected. Then you would put the sprinkler system on top of that. So with the sprinkler system and not being protected, they're allowed to build them that big.
With the materials being used, is there any kind of specialized equipment that the fire department needs in order to fight a fire in those buildings?
Again, the attics are all sprinkled with a dry system. The parking garage areas are all sprinkled with a dry system. They have smoke alarms, tamper switches on the sprinkler system, flow alarms. With something like that, again, anything can happen, get into it, but each individual section is fire-rated for what it is. Under the code, right now, it does not require the wood structural members to be treated, but they are covered with a 5/8 fire-rated sheet rock. This is just a photograph of 230 Beale Street with a podium, parking garage down below by the white pickup truck, and they've installed some windows, and the siding has not started on the building yet. This is 10 Shipyard Drive. They are approximately 60% done with the occupancy permits inside the building. They're anticipating probably a June opening for the entire building. Other than that, they're still working on the siding. The siding came from overseas. It was pre-cut, and they had a lot of issues with the margin of, between the panels when they were putting them on. And so to ship new panels in, it took 24 weeks.
Is that a podium construction as well?
Yes, it is. The only difference on this one, the podium underneath, is steel construction. The other three in town are concrete, reinforced concrete construction.
Are there pilings?
Yes, footings and pilings where required.
Is there a ledge underneath those surfaces?
They didn't hit any ledge down there, not on any of them. There was some material on 319 Lincoln Street that they had to take out because of the old Shipyard, and they went down about 20 feet where they found good material to start the footing, and then they brought in processed gravel and stone.
Are you present when that occurs?
We're there for inspections, correct. Whenever they put a footing in, the farms are up, the steel is put in place, depending upon what the sharp drawings say, if it's 12 inches on center, 18 or something like that, we sign off on that along with the engineer. But we want to see the engineer's report first, then we'll go out with his or her report and look and make sure it's done correctly. This is 319 Lincoln Street. They are almost 96% occupied as far as occupancies being issued. So they're really moving along.
Are there people in there now?
Yes, there are. The parking garage is about three-quarters of the way constructed. They are kind of using that for a staging area for some of their equipment and things. As far as staff and inspections, the salaries would be 227,694. We have six full-time personnel, one building commissioner, two administrative assistants, three building officials, and six part-time personnel, six building officials. I just wanted to say that I could not do my job without these people. I have a great, great team in the building department, really, really good. The expenses is $14,378. Major items would be $5,000 for in-state travel, which would be inspections that everybody gets paid mileage and things. $2,678 for fuel, because we do have one truck. And we're anticipating change in all the code books to the 2018 next year, so for those new books, it would be $2,500. We also have the revolving, building revolving account fund, which is credited with paying the plumbing, gas, and electrical inspectors and related fees and paperwork and things like that for that.
That's it?
Yes.
Mike, thank you. It's, in the last several years, as we've gone through these budgets and looked at the entire community planning budget, we haven't necessarily had the opportunity to drill deeper into all the different departments. And this is just, you know, really helpful, I think, for the board. I think it'll be very helpful for the advisory committee, and hopefully for members of the public to understand, you know, the nature of the work, the different code requirements that are taking place. And once again, a department where the number of requests from Hingham citizens, you know, the service demands on your department continue to increase as they do in other places, so my thanks for, you know, a really informative presentation, and thank you to you and your team for all the great work that you do in the town.
Thank you.
I'd echo that, especially on those big projects down at the Shipyard on Beale Street. I know how something like that can get away from you if you're not keeping your eyes wide open. I'd also like to thank you for your professionalism on 58 Main Street. That was a very, very difficult exercise, and I thought that you and the department discharged it professionally with a lot of class. For the budget that you have, you do great work, so compliments to you.
Thank you. The 58 Main Street was a joint effort.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Nick.
Mind if we just jump back and do two other quick budgets, because they're, they need to see the dispatch budget as well? And if we can get these two one-sliders?
Sure.
We can probably do it fairly quickly. So first, we have the Public Safety Utilities Budget. It's located on the beginning of Roman numeral 11. This is a budget annually. It's for emergency water and street lighting. The total request for FY19 was $519,044. The departmental request this year is $515,900 for a decrease of just over $3,000 or 0.6%. If you jump ahead and there, I'm sorry, I apologize for the pagination, it got a little mixed up. If you look at 184 is the budget, and 156A is the presentation for public safety. So 156A, you'll see the breakdown where, for the FY20, FY20 Emergency Water Budget is a flat fee charged by Aquarian to maintain water in the town's fire hydrants. We've asked them for a total dollar amount to maintain that number of gallons, and this is the dollar amount they gave us. I will confirm with the accountant tomorrow when this occurred. I worry that it occurred prior to the DPU findings.
I'm looking at this. I was thinking the same thing, Tom. You know, I think the overall rate increase that, you know, all of us residential water customers are going to be having is about 11% before the capital surcharge. And I know that somewhere in that, you know, very long decision was the emergency water. My recollection was that everything went up.
So I'll confirm when the quote came in, but that's what we were given.
I would also say, and in fairness, when these budgets were put together, when the rate case was identified, you know, there's a process by which the water company has to file the final rate case with the DPU, and that took several iterations because there were multiple corrections that the DPU requested. So it's quite possible that when this budget was prepared, the rate case wasn't finalized.
It just wasn't completed yet. I think that's exactly the scenario, and if that's the case, we would correct this prior to AdCom's review. The $10,000 line item in that budget is for repair of, emergency repair of hydrants, and then the lighting figure of $105,000 is for, to budget, to fund the 2,331 streetlights in town that are run by the Hingham Municipal Light Plan.
And it looks like the Hingham light rate decrease that all of us ratepayers experienced last year was also applied to street lighting, because this year, the budget is, two-thirds is down by about 30% from the previous year. So, you know, that's really nice, that $40,000 less that we're paying for electricity is $45,000 that we have to, you know, fund a position, help provide some of these services that are in such demand.
Yep, exactly. So jumping ahead to the dispatch that the chief and deputy work very closely with, just want them here in case you have any questions about their operation. But the dispatch services is found on page Roman numeral 10 is the summary. Last year's budget request was $858,466. This year's request is $901,390 for an increase of $42,924 or a flat 5% increase. This is what we do annually. The budget for Shrek is not completed for several weeks even from now, so I don't have more information to go on other than the 5% annual usual increase. What I will tell you, though, is I am a board member by function of the position, and what we've been hearing on that board is some warnings from the state, just that they are looking to fund through their grant opportunities for dispatch centers, the new onboarding regional dispatch centers. So they look to fund the new ones prior to, before they're willing to fund mature regional dispatch agencies, which we now are. So we might have some difficulties going forward in terms of receiving grant money, which is going to necessarily in future years likely increase our local assessments. So I throw that out there. Not for this year, I'm not anticipating that problem this year, but in future years, I just wanted to forewarn everyone.
This may be a follow-up, but it would be, maybe helpful to know how much grant funding is currently supporting the entire operation, so that we have a sense of what are, you know, you know, that may be something if somebody could follow up. So, you know, this $900,000 is our portion of it. So, you know, if we look at the whole operation, how much is getting funded by grants, you know, that would just allow us to say, hey, if they're cut in half, if they go away, this is, you know, this is the hole in the budget that we might have.
I would say in general, we hear nothing but terrific stories about the services provided by Shrek through all four towns. As we know, the Shrek provides dispatch services for fire and police to all four of Hingham, Cohasset, Hull, and Norwell. And all four towns are very happy with the services received today.
And I would just thank, Michelle is not here, but Glenn is here. You know, last week when the national 911 was out of service for a couple periods of time, I thought the communication of what residents should do should they need to get in touch, the communication was immediate. It was widespread across all different platforms. Updates were provided. You know, you never like to hear something like that happen, but I thought that the town's response to that was very professional and very much appreciated.
Yep. If you don't mind, I'll just ask Bob if you could go to the screen for a sec, just so the folks at home could see the breakdown. The FY18 calls for service, which is how the costs are apportioned throughout the, through Shrek, 33% of calls for service come through Hingham, 26 for Norwell, 24 for Hull, and 17 for Cohasset. It says here that most of our, the most frequent calls we get are for medical aid, building checks and the like, vehicle stops, et cetera. Animal calls is on there, thank you, Leslie. So, they do a great job. Okay. If you don't have any other questions, we can jump ahead to the police department. Come on up, chief. And deputy, sorry. Okay, so the police department.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. How you doing?
Hello.
Hi.
How you been?
Good. I just have to give you a little bit of a warning first. I'm trying to be keeping in my competitive spirit with the fire department. It is the police department they call, when no one else knows what to, not the fire department. I just want to clear that up.
Tom feels like they call the selectman's office, so you guys can duke it out.
You know, I think we all feel that way sometimes, but yeah.
Okay, so let's see. Okay, so, let's see. The FY19, if you look on page Roman numeral 10, you get the summary breakdown for the police department. The FY19 revised budget for the police department in total was six million five thousand three hundred eighteen dollars. Uh, this year's departmental request was six million seventy-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars with an additional request of seventy-three thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars. I am recommending sixty-three thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars of that additional request for a total town administrator recommended amount of six million one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars, which is a one hundred thirty-eight thousand fifty-four dollar increase or 2.3% over last year. Um, I'll just summarize real quick and chief can get into it a little bit, but the, the $10,000 differential in the additional request, uh, he is identifying a need for, um, for additional overtime for his department. And we, we discussed it and I think that we, maybe we can do it with a little bit less just based on some additional hires that, uh, that he's realizing now. So, that said, if you jump ahead to page 123 in your book, you'll get to the police department budget. And again, shortly thereafter is the presentation. 133 is the presentation. Okay, chief, you have the floor.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for being here. I feel like I was doing a homework project for, for college here. Um, and as usual, I was here working till, until the last minute. So, uh, things don't change sometimes.
Michelle is a tough instructor.
Um, the Hingham Police Department mission, uh, I think is an important statement for us. Uh, the mission of the Hingham Police Department is to protect and serve those who reside in and travel through Hingham. Above all, we embrace the role of community, community guardians by promoting partnerships with our citizens, schools, and businesses. We are dedicated to maintaining high quality of life and a level of safety in the town of Hingham by providing police services which are professional, ethical, and innovative. And, uh, we go on to basically define some of the, uh, things that we do. Protect life and property, preserve the peace, prevent crime, um, enforce all laws coming with the department, within departmental jurisdiction, supervise public functions such as parades and dances where public order requires police presence. We respond to all emergencies. Uh, we document all incidences. We work with town boards, ensure public safety, traffic, and pub, public tranquility issues are identified during all permitting and planning stages. We work with the public schools, private schools, the faith community, and civic and business organizations to provide a safe environment for those who attend. Uh, we identify social issues that impact local areas and partner with the communities to educate, educate and identify solutions. We also partner with all local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies to assist when needed. And that sort of defines, um, the general mission of what we're out there doing. Um, the deputy and I have had a extensive amount of conversation and, um, we've sort of set ourselves for a three-year goal. Uh, our goals are to modernize and to restructure the Hingham Police Department to meet the needs and the challenges of a changing global economy and the changing social norms of its citizenry. Uh, part of this change will include creating a working environment that allows personal employee growth and job satisfac, job satisfaction while accomplishing the mission of the agency. And I think that's an important statement right there because I think we've seen some examples and we've taught, uh, um, I'm going to be telling my children now, uh, or my grandchildren, I should say, that they should become carpenters and plumbers. And, um, you know, we're seeing these general drifts in, uh, the, in generational issues and that's something that we have to respond to. We've noticed over the past, um, five or six years that our list of candidates gets smaller and smaller and smaller. Um, we also notice that, uh, when we're responding to police calls, we're getting more and more and we're, we're being dragged into the, more so as social workers to a lot of issues. Um, I'm hoping that as time goes on, um, the state and the federal government will get some plans in place to eventually, um, backfill some of the missions that we're filling right now. Uh, but we're founded as the first responders, um, that we have to take certain actions out of, uh, to, to prevent sort of thing. So, what's happening now, um, we're spending longer times at calls, dealing with issues we've never had to deal with in the past. And it's part of the cultural shift right now. A cultural shift is talking about jail divergence and juvenile justice and some other, um, issues. So, the, the social atmosphere has changed. It's not the idea of, um, just locking people up and, or just saying no to drugs. That, that, uh, was a philosophy that's no longer in existence. So, we're definitely taking longer in training officers, uh, to meet these challenges. Um, and I think it's also important for us to, to, to maintain a vibrant work ethic and community. Uh, we need to meet the demands, um, of what the, the modern worker wants. And it's not always the idea of money or salaries. It's, it's providing, um, but unfortunately, um, you know, the unknowns. They, they value vacations differently. Their, their time off is valued differently. Um, they like to come in. They're very loyal employees. They want to do the job, but they also want their time off. And, and that's an adjustment because, um, it's something I swore I would always do and probably shorted my children on the fact that the police department always came first. Um, and I think that's a generational issue. Um, so that's something we have to adapt, adapt as we go forward. If we want to get qualified, uh, candidates, we, we need to look at that, uh, and take the right steps to continue the recruiting of positive employees. The other thing that's shifting is a regional philosophy. Um, I think, you know, we were very fortunate that, uh, we did go to the regional dispatch and I know seven years ago, it was sort of a new concept to a lot of people. We're, we're definitely, um, into the system now where we're sharing, um, more data. Our whole computer, computer system is based on data sharing without, not only our, our, our towns, but, uh, our IMC computer system links up to all IMC computer systems within the state. So, we can get information, um, of people being involved in incidences in North Adams or something like that. If, if they were involved, we can get that. The technology is, is, is something that we're reaching out with. So, um, but the regional, like I said, the other thing with the regional philosophy is that we're increasing our trainings, grant funding, um, i- is key to us. It's part of, the more information we can get out of the scene is, uh, is good. And I think by combining, we have a, a new, we had a lockdown at Hingham High School this year and, um, it was, you know, everything went fine. Uh, we've done a lot of planning with the schools and recent planning. But one of the things we identified after discussing the issue, we, we actually, um, got together with the teachers and the schools and we had a little talk about what went good, what went bad. And, you know, we identified a problem that, um, getting manpower to the scene. So, using a regional approach, we reached out to the local towns and we now created a system that if, uh, an event happens at a school or, or a major event, um, we have the ability just to, the dispatch, the Shrek will page it out and it will automatically trigger a response from the other, from the other towns to send units. So that, you know, we have them there within five to 10 minutes, um, for that initial time just to start getting the situation under control. So, and that's what I'm, what I'm talking about sort of in the regional. And I think the social regional emergency communication center that we just talked about is a great example of the regionalization process. Um, every, every month, we have a multiple meetings. We have law enforcement meetings. They have fire department meetings, fire chiefs meetings, and then we meet with the board of managers. But we're also discussing what we, what we need to do, um, what, what grants are out there available. There's two major grants with the 9/11 dispatch center. One of them deals with the infrastructure of the labor portion. And I think that's a, um, the question came up earlier. I believe that portion of the granting is going to remain there and that helps. That's actually part of the operating budget for the Shrek.
Okay.
Uh, the one that they're talking about decreasing is what they call the training and equipment.
Technology.
Technology, yeah. So, um, they're, they're holding back on some of that, um, as, and they're giving, reapportioning it to the places that are just starting up. But they're still giving out grants. We had meetings with people. We're discussing, um, what our different options are. So, I'm hoping that those don't really affect us, but we've been very fortunate. Uh, we, our, our radio equipment was in, at probably about 10 years old. It was in bad shape. Um, it's just in the process of being totally restored, um, through a grant, through the Shrek. It will also give us what they refer to as an overlay system, which will give us two free operating channels above and beyond what we already have. Um, so that way, if there's major incidences, um, you can actually totally switch to another radio system. Or if any other towns have it. What's that?
They're all recorded?
They're all recorded, yep. Um, everything is recorded now, just about everything. Um, phone lines, the works, it's, it's, that's just technology now and that's what people expect. Um, another group we've got involved with is the Plymouth County Outreach, um, and also Parry, which is police assisted addiction recovery. Um, it started up on the North Shore. It's one of the first groups of police response to the addiction problem. Um, with Plymouth County Outreach, um, the award that you see out there on the board from the International Chiefs of Police Association was granted to the Plymouth County Outreach. Um, I am a board member of that. That's why, unfortunately, why it has my name. But it really, that name should be replaced with the Hingham Police Department because the program promotes, um, a regional response where officers respond to places where, where there's been a, uh, an issue with a drug overdose. They offer assistance. They offer placement. It's not just a police department. It, it's also a recovery coach and we're actually able to actually get them involved in treatment. That was one of the big problems. We, there were no beds available. So, this has been a problem that, you know, we started seven years ago working on with Hingham Cares and it's finally evolved into, not all those Hingham Cares involved, but this has evolved with other towns. So, this, that's that regionalization effect that's taking place. And this was also brought out. So, it was presented in Florida, where we?
Florida.
Florida, um, and decided to take root in other places across the country, the program that was developed. So, uh, that's a typical thing of the advantage of regionalization, working with other communities. Um, we also have a grant with the town of Wamouth for an embedded social worker. We'll, we'll have, uh, the social workers working from Wamouth and Hingham and, um, basically, um, it's just, just starting up now. Um, we're looking forward. It's gonna, I think it's gonna be a great thing. Uh, mental health issues are a real big issue that we've been spending a lot of time on training. Um, this will help us in that cause and, um, it will provide us with, uh, additional training that would be in-house as well as the availability of an emergency response to get a social worker, um, you know, a certified social worker out there, um, on the scene.
Are they expected to testify?
Um, the, the, most of the time that people are involved in this type of mental health issue, it's, uh, there's, uh, most of it's jail deferment. Um, the, the idea is that in the past, we had no other options. If someone had a drug addiction problem, um, we may turn to an arrest to put them into the court system, uh, to get them the benefits and, and hopefully it would work out through the court system. Um, this sort of cuts that link out and allows them to be transported right to a social mental health issue, uh, different facilities. And the idea is to provide them the assets before it gets to the idea of just locking, uh, locking them up in jail. Um, because that's not going to solve the problem. Usually they get out and they're recidiv, the recidivism is pretty high on most of these things. So, um, I, I think that's the goal we're looking at and more and more, we're dealing with mental health issues out there. Um, we're also working with the Metrolec Mutual Aid, major incidents, training, knowledge, resources, and experience. Um, we have several, um, offices that are on the, for the better, and maybe everyone wants to refer them to SWAT teams. I think that's sort of a bad name or a bad image. Um, a lot of the work that they do is related to searches, um, arrest warrants. And it provides a, it provides us an extra layer of safety and an extra power of manpower. If someone's lost, we have the ability to call them out. We had an incident in Hingham where the SWAT started to respond to a, a person with autism that was lost in Bedcove Park. Um, and, you know, those, that's the time when you need manpower. And the only time they can get manpower is when you call an agency like this, that these people respond from all over and you can have large groups of people there.
Do we have out-of-town offices doing warrant arrests in town?
No. What would happen, um, for instance, if we had what they refer, I'll let you actually speak because Dave was more involved in Metro actually on the field, so.
Yeah, Metrolec is a, is a regional organization that basically, uh, member agencies have to commit a certain percentage of their resources, um, as well as an annual dues to be part of Metrolec. Um, warrant service, if you had a high-risk warrant, they would meet the threshold for, uh, a Metrolec activation. Uh, it wouldn't just be a regular, uh, arrest warrant for somebody. You would have to meet certain threshold, uh, to have them come out. It would have to be involving firearms or, or something like that that involves a, exactly, yes. Yeah. Uh, so normally you would not have, uh, Metrolec respond for a regular warrant service.
And usually, uh, whenever anything happens in the town, your town, from another agency, um, that you will almost always get a notification and they'll ask, they're gonna tell you what's going on. Um, we'll usually send, send somebody. I know the FBI has come down and done some stuff in Hingham. And they'll always inform us in advance of where it's, what's going on. So, that we can have a cruiser. You know, the first thing I question, well, when do you want a cruiser there? Because I think, you know, if FBI agents showed up at your door or, or, let's, you know, any other agency, you, you might question it. But I think if a Hingham police officer shows up with a black and white cruiser wearing a Hingham police uniform, it, it lends to the credibility and the comfort of the people. Um, that, that at least they know it's legitimate. And, um, and I, I think it tends, and we talked about that during some of the talks we've had with people who got in sanctuary cities. I think that's some of the issues about the police handling, stuff like that. Um, one of our other major, um, programs it would like to do is a, get a national accreditation program. Um, that involves reviewing and updating all the policies to become nationally accredited. Um, basically what that guarantees a town is that you have a police department that's up to, uh, the total standards of the industry. Um, it's a, it's a, I think it's something that police departments have to finally achieve it. It's, it's a real honor for officers to be in that involved. There are some insurance, um, reductions for liability issues if you are accredited, but it's mainly, uh, provides us with the know-how and, and the wherewithal to make sure that we're running a department properly.
How long does that take?
Um, depending on how much it can be, because it seems like lately, every time we finish a new policy, the law changes and we have to readapt it again. But, um, we expect that will be a two to three-year program.
Do you have to bring people in from the outside on that or can you do it internally?
You, you try to do it. It's pretty labor-intensive, but we've been trying to do it mostly, but, um, we use interns. Um, we use, uh, we've shifted over some of our roles, uh, and we have officers working on certain portions. Like if we had firearms policy, we'd have officers that are involved in firearms training, sort of come up with, you know, review of the policy. We're also guided by, uh, the Master Chief of Police, uh, the accreditation people. So, we have, uh, basically vast resources, way to get these policies and adopt the best of them.
How many departments would you estimate are accredited nationally within the Commonwealth? Is it, is it a small number or?
I'd have to just, it would only be a guess.
Okay. No, I don't, I know it's not easy.
It's not a lot. I'll be honest with you. It's probably less than a hundred out of the 300 communities. Um, you should have asked because we have a meeting coming up. I, I could answer that in a couple of weeks. But, um, I think technology is another area where they're looking to improve in efficiency and cost effectiveness through new technology and programs. Um, as the deputy chief says, it doesn't replace the man, but it makes us be able to function more as a, as an organization and keep track of things and record-keeping. Record-keeping is very, uh, complicated and everything we do has to be, have records behind it as far as training. Um, because if we get sued and we don't have the proper records, I have to prove that we did the training. Um, that would be, oh, you know, we'd become liable for that. So, uh, and I think, uh, departments are required to have a forward-looking vision. Uh, we believe that the world is a change, is changing and we believe that police agencies need to be visionary and adaptive to the new social awareness and cultural change. Uh, we're embracing the concept outlined in the 2015 implementation guides authored by the President's Task Force for the 21st Century. Uh, and we're also very open to new programs. Uh, the next slide is based on the calendar years and, um, we just went through, uh, we use sort of 2005, um, as sort of a landmark and, um, we're now sort of seem to be leveling out around the 22,000 fall timeframe. Um, I think one of the things we've noticed though is that, again, um, call, calls are taking longer to resolve. We're spending more time working on them. The solutions are greater. The offices are more in-depth with them. Um, and, and we're trying to work out solutions. So, they, uh, and I think the other thing that, you know, I think last summer, we were a little bit short-handed, so some of it reflects. But I, I'm certainly, um, you know, I just looked at the building inspectors, uh, buildup of the north end of town and we know that those are going to generate more calls. Um, they're going to generate more traffic calls. They're going to generate more calls for service. So, you know, we're expecting that as the density gets higher and higher in these areas and houses are going in, um, in these areas that we'd never thought there'd be houses. Um, that's something that, you know, the process with that for us starts, right, getting involved with the planning boards. Um, I've spent many nights here and our offices spend many nights reviewing different traffic data. data so that we can get a handle and hopefully provide some help to the department in dealing with some of this. We've been successful with getting equipment to help deal with some of the traffic issues, radar trailers, sign boards, you know, this is something when new people, and also we do not have radio equipment, because all these buildings, we can't get radio transmissions inside the fire codes and the fire laws and they're actually mandated to put in booster signals within the buildings and they have to pass an inspection for the radio system, so. The advantage of us working and talking to these people is immense. As radio systems get more complicated, sometimes you lose the, you know, the, they're very complicated with receivers and I think we have five or six receivers based throughout the area. None of it can be done over the old telephone wires anymore, so we've had to transition to all our, owning our own lines with a fiber network or using microwave transmissions, so. We're having an issue with Norwell with the towers, it's affecting everybody and that's, we finally got permission today to dig through the guy's yard to put the cable up to the top of Judges Hill to, that's been a four-year goal of trying to get the telephone company to do something with it.
Do you envision a different protocol with respect to the coverage in the North Side and addressing the kind of calls you anticipate getting out of those apartment complexes?
Yeah, we actually do, this is a discussion we've sort of had, is that as this area becomes more dense, not only with that, but the development of the shipyard, I'm sure the, Ken can talk to this, about the usage of the harbor, the commuter boat. We basically inherited all the transitions from when they moved out of Quincy. You know, it's a very busy area and it's going to continue to get busier, I think, and who knows what the future is going to bring, but we've definitely shifted more resources. What we are, commonly sometimes we'll have is two cars assigned to the North Sector as well as almost similar to the South Side Sector, and I think that we have, rather always sort of said that the town of Hingham looks like a barbell. We have the North Side and the South Side and the barbells at the end are getting bigger and bigger and the center's staying the same, but those areas are definitely, those are the only areas that are left to be building up and, you know, that's going to change the way we respond and it's going to change where we deploy our offices.
Just a bit concerned to hear that there's a, there's a potential for a break in the radio contact with the station when you go into one of those large apartment complexes and sending a single officer in there could be problematic.
Well, yes, this is why we have to, you know, even with staying on top of making sure there's modern equipment and your equipment works well, you can still always, you're always subject to mechanical failure, so, you know, we generally have a policy of having one man officers and, you know, one officer per car, that's why we have multiple people responding all the time. The officers are very good looking out to each other, they know that someone's always on the way to get there. And oftentimes, based on the situation, they might hold off a little bit to make sure they have the proper forces there, the proper conditions and part of the trouble we have with the high rises is, you know, certainly may not be high rises of some people's minds, but if you live in Hingham, they're high rises. The whole environment changes on how you get in and how you respond and the contacts because you lose sort of ownership with the residents, we don't necessarily know who they are, they change hands a lot. You know, we don't get, you know, we try to keep them updated as much as possible, but the turnover's a lot greater. We mentioned that all these new units are being built with, you know, with parking garages in them, which is different, and, you know, they experienced, they had to make some changes because of freezing pipes and everything and some of the plans, so we do monitor those things, but.
Is there going to be an internal security force in any of these facilities?
No, but we are working on with the facilities camera systems and everything so that we eventually have access to that. There's not many new buildings being built now that don't have internal camera systems and security protocols, but they don't have security people. Tried to give you a breakdown of the calls, there's 97 dispatch codes. A call comes in, it's sent to the dispatch, to get into the computer system, they code it with what they believe the call is and it's not always what the call is, so I couldn't break down pie chart the 97 different categories, so I did my best, I grouped calls together and I think they're, you know, a lot of things what we do, you know, explaining the biggest chunk there is motor vehicle stops, that's could be motor vehicle stops because the offices are generating and where we get calls from them. We do receive a lot of erratic operator calls, we think someone's drunk or there's an issue with operating, so some of those are self-generated, but others are not. I think an active motor vehicle is an interesting thing because traffic fatalities, traffic accidents, and enforcement of the laws are a critical thing. I mean, we always, very rarely, you know, we always see the drivers when the police aren't around and you go, oh, I wish there was a cop there, you know. They actually keep the streets, there's definitely a correlation between traffic enforcement and safety of communities and so it's important to get out there. We work with the Governor Highway Safety on grants, we do have been successful in those.
Are the accidents down?
The accidents have been dropping, yeah, and I think, you know, you, when you were on the police department many years ago, you were one of the first traffic officers that was created by Phil Phillips and that has been a continued policy to this, to this day. I recently saw his son came in and turned in a bunch of old photos and I told him, I said, well, you should be proud of your dad because we're still using the same program that he came up with. I think he's happy to hear that.
Yeah, remember that.
And that basically what we do is we take in calls from the citizens where they feel speeding motor vehicles are, or we respond to them and do enforcement in those areas, or we deploy the radar trailers that are out there that you'll see.
Ask a question about the square?
Sure.
Has there been any thought given to coverage of the square? Perhaps not for entire shift, but for some period of it?
I think now that we're getting our strength back up, we've talked about, you know, picking out some peak times and getting officers down there.
On foot?
On foot, you know, to spend some time walking around and just, you know.
It's a rite of passage, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a rite of passage, yeah, I can remember being dropped off on the midnight shift and picked up at eight o'clock in the morning. You were lucky if, you were actually lucky if you got picked up, usually they just drove to the station, you ended up walking back in the square, to Lincoln Street, but, yeah, but what sort of happened with the change in manpower and the stuff that, you know, we're in the, our presence is still in the square, but generally, you know, a foot beat is very, it's good, but it's sort of the, really doesn't allow you to expand that patrol often, you know, over the years we've used bicycles or something, but we have talked about reinstituting and it is something that I'd like to get back down into the areas on, you know, like an hour a day or something, or, you know, pick out some key times to do that.
And you know Glenn, with the, with the Lincoln Building opening up and you're going to have residential, you're going to have retail in there and, you know, in the summertime, I mean, you know, you must get it, our office gets it, but, you know, people who are driving very fast through the square who are ignoring people in the crosswalk, you know, it just, you know, the summer is a good time because the intensity of activity down there is, is greater.
The winter's not bad either, Chief, because quite frankly, I think the roadway's been narrowed due to the reconstruction of the square and I think the clearances are tighter and people are not parking in the way they should.
Yeah, I mean, part of the design of that was, you know, sort of also narrowing it up to slow the speeds down and we're very conscious that, I know a couple of projects in town suggested that, you know, we reroute cars through the square and I've adamantly opposed that because we're actually trying to put them back out on 3A. If you're passing through Hingham, you should be on the main roads, not the side roads, so that remains an issue that we continue to try to fight off. These are just some of our court statistics, 2002, excuse me, 207 arrests, 143 complaint applications, 91 detective investigative, new investigations, 77 court orders, 15 arrest warrants and 16 protective custody's. Court orders could be anything, any kind of domestic violence, harassment orders, intervention orders.
Any commitment orders in there, Chief?
Section 35 is not that many.
Section 12s.
Section 12s don't actually go through the court, but yeah, that's something we've, we've had a lot of discussion with the section 35s through the PCO group and we use them as a last chance resort to get someone to drug treatment, but the philosophy behind getting, forcing someone into drug treatment doesn't always, it may save, it does save, it probably might be a life-saving thing, but it doesn't always lead to the recovery issue that we'd like, but it's a tool in our toolbox that we can use to hopefully save someone's life and give them another opportunity and chance of getting themselves straightened out.
Are you satisfied with that 207 figure, Chief?
Oh no, I'm old school.
Oh, you're a deputy. I'm the same.
Yeah, and this is, you know, it's something, you know, arrests are difficult now when you, when laws are changing, you know, the officers are out there doing their jobs, but sometimes some of these calls are being diverted to other, other means of restitution, which is, which is good.
The amount of time it takes to clear a call, even an arrest for OUI, I mean, you're talking hours to clear one of those calls.
Respect that. But I think, you know, that's something that we've actively, you know, officers have a job description and we're asking them to live up to that job description and we're trying to put our expectations out, what we expect and if, and I think the public expects us to do these things, so we should be making sure they're being done. Citations, we have 2,697, 647 motor vehicle crashes and 200 parking tickets. Now, just the pictures right there is that, just to show you some of the community activities we're involved in. The pictures with, at the courthouse is Officer Ford's criminal justice class and they were down there at the court, learning about the court system. We have the speed radar trailer, that money came from one of, one of the projects on Beale Street, no, that was another one. Our revenue sources, this is interesting because I really have never sort of gone to look for this before. The police detail surcharge that the town gets was $69,842. Some of the state equipment grants, planning and zoning conditions have amounted into $15,000 this year. Alarm billing revenue was $8,900. Court revenue was $7,158. Parking tickets, $5,350. Licensing and permits were $4,250. Solicitors permits were $3,211 and fees to fingerprints and records miscellaneous is $592, giving us a total revenue that we're bringing in of $114,303.
Is the court revenue reflective of fines?
What's that?
Is the court revenue reflective of fines from motor vehicle tickets?
It's a combination of a lot of different aspects. It can be motor vehicle citations, court assessed costs that the town may assess. I think with a, with a traffic citation, 50% goes back to the town. We don't get the whole, if you write a, you know, I'll be honest with you, if we write a five, you know, if we wrote a speeding ticket, you know, it's not unreasonable to see a hundred, a $200 fine, so if the people appeal it sometimes, it kick, you know, the magistrate may knock it down to $100 or something. And, you know, I'm very sensitive to the fact, I, we're not really, my job is not to raise revenue and I don't mean that sarcastically, but I think if, you know, we shouldn't be out there writing tickets just to raise revenue, I think that's not the purpose of the police department.
You'd lose your credibility.
Well, I think that's not what it's for and that's, I mean, it's great that it does bring revenue and I think it's important that, you know, that they have these things, so, you know, I think the police detail surcharge is something that basically, that fee just goes to pay for the person that does all the administration and payroll issues, all the details. Our large-scale event planning, the Fourth of July road construction projects, athletic events, school events, voting, Christmas in the Square, Taste of Hingham, Batcove Park, remediation project. A lot of these things that we talk about as large-scale events often come at the cost of, you know, within our, they don't, there's no money set aside for this, it's not, we can't always pass the cost on. We try to pass costs on when needed, but sometimes you can't because like, what's the price, I'm saying, like you can't have the Fourth of July parade because we don't have the money for it, or you can't have Christmas in the Square because the money isn't there. So I think there's certain community events that really tend to, you know, work for the community and that's probably our obligation is to make sure that they're run safely. Harry Sylvester and I have had, Harry and Randy Sylvester have had a lot of conversation now about Christmas in the Square, for instance, there were just as many people from the Highway Department there working on picking it up and cleaning it up and setting it up as there were police officers. They're also, we're also asking them to bring down vehicles and use them as road barricades. So, you know, this is a, you know, something we've been trying to do over the past couple of years because we now, you know, the world has changed and these are things that we have to take into account and we'd be negligent if we weren't doing them.
I think you do an excellent job.
Well, thank you. I mean, but it's just, and, you know, we've looked at, I was looking at some barricades that you could buy that you can transport, it's like $70,000, so eventually I may be talking to the Capitol level about buying something that, because you hate to say that, but we need something that's, I can't always rely on a dump truck to be there or, you know, employees, you need to have other equipment to, that's portable and can be moved, so. I promise, I'm not next year, maybe a couple of years down the road, we'll be through Capitol all the way though. Permit reviews, one-day liquor licenses, road races, block parties and bike rides. We're doing a lot more permitting now that it seems that road races are a huge thing lately, they're just getting bigger and bigger and a lot of the one-day liquor licenses, it turns out that, it's amazing, I never quite get the concept of why you will go out and run seven miles and then go back and have a beer or two. I can't make the five mi, I can't make the five miles, let alone have the two beers, but, you know, this is what, what people are doing now and so, you know, we have to carefully, you know, review those processes and I think it's a great idea by the board to go through that process that we didn't have, I think it's been a real thing and it's a multitude, all the departments kick into it and feedback into it. Fire departments are very good about the different planning and building and working with me on that as well as the Board of Health, the building inspectors, you know, like I said, it's a team of people doing it. Solicitors permits are those people that registered to do do-to-day sales, we do have records of those. Firearms licensing, we issued 283 permits this year and site plan reviews are something that we're very active and I really didn't get a number on that because it seems like I'm always here for that. And then safety meetings, we do, we're heavily involved in the past couple of years with the schools, but not only that, with the interface community and business as well. You know, we've done a lot of work with the, the nursery schools are often, you know, they have the same concerns that the public schools have, so, you know, we'll go and work with them, we'll give them as much knowledge as, as we can and try to get them, you know, we want this place to be safe.
Plus I think the department's involvement on traffic committee is invaluable.
Yeah.
And that, that's been a longstanding
Yes.
... commitment by the department.
I think one of the pictures that you noticed too is the event that we've been sponsoring to educate the town employees at Hingams, this was held not that long ago by a company and it's in cooperation with a company by synergy and our offices as well. I think it's, I think it's well receptive by all the town employees, I think they really benefit from it. Our current staffing is 53 offices, chief, deputy chief, five lieutenants, seven sergeants, 31 patrol officers, and it says that includes the two canine officers. We're not counting the dogs, okay, if I count the dogs, we'll have 55, that's the offices themselves. Five school resource offices, three detectives, three clerical staff, seven, seven school crossing guards, it's actually down to six right now, and 18 special police officers that report through us. It's a diverse, you know, it's a diverse thing and I think one thing I'm really proud of is the addition of Notre Dame Academy and this offshore collaborative school actually paying for the services of one of the offices. I think that's a program that's starting to catch on, I was speaking to a chief, I think it was today, and they were talking that they're working on an agreement with the charter school in their town. the charter school in their town to get that school resource officer coverage, and I think, you know, we've talked about it at the chief's meetings, and it's like, these, these private schools want it, they, their parents are demanding the safety as well, and I think it's a-
Are the resource offices present onsite while the school is open?
Yes, we have one in Notre Dame Academy.
Okay.
Heather, Officer Heather Mendoza is there, and we have, excuse me, Officer Joel Salatory is at Notre Dame Academy, Officer Heather Mendoza is at the social collaborative.
Okay.
And then we have-
That's her full-time assignment?
That's her full-time assignment, yeah. And, sorry, not full-time, because she's still responsible to us, so in times of overtime-
But that's where she's assigned.
That's where she's assigned to, yeah.
As well as Officer Salatory.
Yes, yeah.
And Officer Ramsey is at the middle school?
Officer Ramsey's at the middle school, Officer Ford's at the high school, and Officer, Officer Walden, yeah, goes between all the, John Walden, yeah.
Nice.
I know I'd mess up one name sooner or later, he rotates through all the schools.
Good.
I think often during our budgeting process, and this question often comes up, is how do we compare to other towns? I'm using a, the 20 comparable towns that Hingams always used to look at what our staffing levels are and the ratio of staff of, you know, rated offices to patrol offices, and I think when you look at those numbers, we're probably pretty much right in the middle of where the other towns, this is sort of, right now, it's just by the, it's sorted by the number of police officers so that you can see where we fall on that, but I think if you average it out down the bottom there, we, 38% ratio of ranking patrol, of ranking offices to patrol offices, and then the ratio of rank to the total number of things, so I think, but right in that, right in that mix where most other departments do, and I, I noticed that when I was speaking to the Concord Police Department, they don't have any deputy chiefs or captains, but two of their lieutenant positions, I think they had six when I was looking at it earlier. Maybe it was so, like, one of, one of the towns, maybe it wasn't Concord, it was at-
Handover.
Handover. Two of their, two of their lieutenants are what they refer to as an administrative lieutenant, and they serve to work with the chief, and basically, like, one handling administrative, one handling the workforce, so, it's a little different structure, but like I said, I think this sort of demonstrates that we are where we want to be. The deputy and I, as part of looking at the police department, we've been trying to reorganize this, we're, we're very fortunate right now that we, we are raging out, I guess, in a lot of ways, and we're, we're placing, when I came on, was a group of town of us, so we're all reaching that retirement age, and as a result, it's filtering in throughout the department, we have a younger and younger department now, you know, under five years is, I don't have the statistic, but it's just, most of, most of our guys are new, you know, and we have a great opportunity now with the, with the new promotions coming up to bring in a whole new fresh body of officers who are just rising up through the ranks that will be the future leaders, so, that's one of the things we want to work on, and I think that's crucial, as the fire department talked about, providing that training and environment where you could foster people to, to move up the ladder and want to become, and at the same time, I think, you know, it's okay to be a patrolman, and be a good, good patrolman for all your career, you know, those are sometimes the most valuable players, and over the years, you know, we can all name certain players that, that were always there, and, you know, they're great assets, so it's trying to find those mixes and finding people with the company, I think that's one of the things, how you manage your workforce now, it's different than how you used to manage it, because you want to keep those employees in spots where they really want to work, and you're getting the maximum out of them.
This is very helpful, it's very instructive, and I appreciate that as you're looking forward at kind of where you want to be in the next couple of years, you're, you know, you're looking at your organization and saying, based on what we want to do in terms of our mission, here's, you know, here's how we best kind of deploy people, so, thank you for putting this together, I know, I know it probably took a lot to hunt down a lot of the information.
Some of it was hard, matter of fact, I think yesterday I just got some of it, so I had to make a last minute change, because I realized-
Well, I, I appreciate the, the time that you took in getting it, because I think it's, it's very helpful, and I think the advisory committee will find it equally, equally helpful.
And, and that's why I think, and, you know, Paul contested this as well, because the police field is changing, as is most businesses, and it's something that we need to learn to adapt to, we, we can't continue to do what we did 70 years ago, or 50 years ago, or 30 years ago, it's definitely changing, and we can see that just by watching TV every night, and, you know, we need to stay ahead of that here, and I think what we're looking at it by professionalizing and maintaining a professional attitude in employees, and hiring the best people we can, and these are all things we're talking about in over the next couple of years, we're going to be trying to make some of those moves that will allow that, so.
Well, and, and I think one of the things to, you know, as, as you talked about the sort of, you know, with, with some of the activity that's taking place in Hingham, you know, your call, it'll be interesting to see what kind of happens to your call volume, and in particular, you know, in the north side of town, if, if that's going to escalate, and how do you best, you know, the way I look at it is I think about it and say, how do you take kind of your salary dollars and, and, you know, put them, put them to their best use?
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, what are, what are going to be the implications down the road, because, you know, one of the things that, you know, I, I saw it on, I think it was Sunday in the Globe, but, you know, the, as the state revenue dollars, the state revenue collections in the month of December were much lower than what was expected, and, you know, people are wondering if some of that has to do with, you know, some of the changes, some of the changes to, to the tax law, but I guess my, my point is that, you know, as, as we're trying to project our revenues out for the next couple of years, you know, we're, we're trying to look and say, what, how much revenue is going to be available to provide all these services to the town, and then how do we best kind of line them up? I think the revenue growth in the town in the next couple of years is, you know, it's, it's been at about 4% for the last five or six years, I see it starting to slow down, it's not going to be flat or anything, but I see it more trending, you know, toward, more towards like, you know, the three.
Yes.
So, you know, being, being prepared for that is, is really helpful, and, you know, so.
I think that's something that we, as, you know, leaders of a department, and, you know, I think that's one of the things that, which kind of Hingham's very good at, department head meetings and stuff, that we talk about this, and our job is to manage the, the dollars and to get the maximum, and, you know, I think the Hingham people get a lot of services from the police department that they don't get in other towns.
Absolutely.
Because I know some, I've lived in other towns, and I said, what do you mean, you don't do that? You know, but we do it, you know, so, you know, I think, and, and I think Hingham's always, people in Hingham have always expected that level of service.
Yep, absolutely.
So, it's important that we try to maintain that best we can.
Yep, well, and, and I think that's why, you know, as we're all taking a look, looking out a couple of years is helpful, because, you know, sometimes we just look at kind of 20 and what's right here, but I think we gotta, I think we gotta look a little further out, and certainly, a really important part of maintaining the police mission is providing, providing everybody who's interested with the opportunity to grow professionally here in Hingham, because, you know, as hard as it is to attract people to come, we have a responsibility to do what we can to retain them.
Yes.
And, and a lot of that is providing opportunities for professional growth within the department, and, and certainly that has to do with people who are interested in, in rank advancement.
It's also finding the opportunities for people to do other stuff just besides that as well.
Yes, yes.
The younger generation of workers now, they want to be kept busy, and they want to see progress being made, and, and that's a good thing, so we need to feed into that, so whether it's just different jobs, we can assign them, you know, we can, can work on those things. As you can see, our salary staffs, salary is the majority of, of course, like most departments, Wages for the full-time officers is a little over $4 million, our clerical full-time help is 128,000, crossing guard, 69, close to 70,000, 69,000, overtime is 46406, and other contractual benefits that, that key in on the payroll amount to $1 million, 33,628. Our expenses were 368,750, 91,000 is officer equipment, that's clothing and equipment that the officers need to do their job, our gas budget of 89,250, training tuitions, all the training stuff that we go to has tuition fees, and, and, you know, that's 29,000. Our vehicle repairs is 25,000, that includes tires and brakes and equipment as well as keeping the money. Ammunition is 22,000, radios, 13,000, and tasers-
Do we qualify every year?
We qualify three times a year, plus an optional night shoot. We're very proactive about the training, we also are required to certify once a year in the taser training, and I know tasers are probably, probably one of the greatest tools that I've seen introduced to law enforcement over a long time. Yeah, the, the hands-on rumble fights that maybe we had many years ago, it looked like a cartoon, a Bugs Bunny cartoon sometimes, those don't exist anymore, we have electronic control weapons such as a taser, and it gives us different, it gives us less lethal options. We also have what we refer to as the 40-millimeter photon launcher, shoots a very large rubber, you know, it's, it's, the 40-millimeter is, it's similar to the old tear gas guns that they used to, used to shoot tear gas, but this shoots a rubber, sort of-
Rubber bullet?
A, a bigger rubber bullet, it's-
It's foam, actually.
It's a big foam, but it's, and it's just, I mean, you know, I should have brought one if you really want to see it, but it allows us to get back, or a taser has a 25-foot effective range, this allows us to get back to 30, 30 yards and shoot somebody with this, and, you know, that's definitely something. So, it gives us that, you know, we're, we're training now, most of the police training now is distance and time, you get, if you can contain the suspect, even if they're, ah, they're dangerous, but you want to create distance and space to protect yourself, and, and then you work from there, so, it's not always, the, the result is not to solve the problem as quickly, it's to solve it in a, in a safe manner, and when it comes to somebody's life, if it takes you 10 hours, that's just the way it's going to be.
Is this equipment issued to all the officers?
Every officer has a taser, and hopefully after our Capitol Outlay Expenditures, every car will be equipped with the 40-millimeter launcher, we currently have four, our goal is to have every car outfitted with-
So, all the second cars?
Basically, every, every, every car.
Every car, okay.
Because it, you know, you've been out there, you, you know, you never have the tool you need if, if you're moving from vehicle to vehicle, it's critical that we have them there when you need them. They'll have an exit, all officers will look best, because also inside the, the Cruze is , is an additional outside carrier with metal plates, if you're going to be using it in, you know, in a SWAT situation or where a rifle may be around, so, we'll be putting helmets in and some extra equipment to deal with that, and, and again, this is just one of those things that-
Got onboard cameras?
We have onboard cameras in the Cruze's, yeah, yeah.
Is the new Ford, one of those interceptor models?
Yeah.
For the camera, you mean? No, the vehicle itself?
Yeah, they're all interceptors, all the Cruze's are.
We've, we've gone for the SUV, which is a little, a little drive, it's actually helpful for the gas mileage as well, but they're, they're, they're a lot more comfortable with the sedans, the sedan's just got, they're getting smaller and smaller, these are actually designed for police, it's like little things, like the doors actually open 90 degrees instead of like 70 degrees, so when you're trying to put somebody in the backseat that really isn't cooperating, that extra room really helps you out, and they're able to, you know, the backseats are equipped with the plastic cage, the plastic floor mats, no plastic seats, you can wash them out, and there's also no place for people to hide things.
Yeah.
And, one of the things that, it's a little bit more expensive, the technology is great with the lights, that we just, the deputy just outfitted the cars now, and we have new lighting systems that-
Oh, yeah, right.
That, a light in my eye, that one, they, they're all lights.
The, the Whalen makes a system that basically adapts to the way the car's being driven, so it acts differently during the day than it does at night, it uses lower power at night, so there's, there's not the blinding lights in your face, if the officer does a traffic stop at night and they open the driver's side door, it shuts off the lights on that side, so it's not blinding the officer, this is equipped with the latest technology that helps the officers do the best job they can in the field, so.
And I think, you know, one of the things we, we tell people is that the crash, the way cars are designed now, they're very designed for crash safety, and part of the system in the Ford interceptor is actually keeping your spare tire in, a lot of departments remove their spare tires and put a radio equipment in there, and what sort of resulted in that was part of that CO2 emissions problem that they had, but it also reduces the option, that tire actually acts as a crash barrier and plays into the role, so, then you have to turn around to keep your car safe, you have to buy a different piece on the back that actually lifts up, so you can still get it to spare, but there's a, the, it's a gun locker and safety locker so that it stays locked, so every car has that, so there's a lot of good features that have come with this, and I think we're trying to work with those and get them done, we've always had a good history with the cars, we want to maintain that. Just the crossing guards came up here, and I, I just wanted to show you that, obviously we're a wonderful department, if we can get a picture of Donnie Walber, a golden K-9, think Patch, that's always a good, good, one of the ending slides, I just wanted to keep that in mind. Our additional requests, crossing guards, actually last year I tried to increase the amount of crossing guards, but I was sort of unaware, I didn't like do it correctly. We have 12 critical areas for crossing guards to work out at the different schools, they've been added, additional crossing guards have been added to East Street and Foster School, I mean, East School and to Foster School. We have not upped our amount, what, what we basically did, we had seven positions, that we just funded the seven positions, but they were actually moving from position to position and covering 12 positions. Being a crossing guard is not a very fun job, they're out there, I tell you, they, they regard that because they're out there, rain or shine, snowy weather, all sorts of bad conditions on Main Street during, you know, bad weather, with, with people that are really mad because you're holding them up in traffic, they do a wonderful job, and, you know, they jump from position to position, they don't get paid a lot of money, as you can see, so, I'd, I'd like to, we've been running this under the deficit for the past four or five years, and it was sort of my fault because I thought I could just make an adjustment because it was an expense adjustment, but I'm going through the proper process this year. We also, we're looking to increase, originally we asked for 40,000, after speaking to the town administration, $30,000 will be good, we, we have notoriously run over in overtime, overtime, and I think if you look at the charts there, that there's very few departments that are able to keep it under the budget of what they've done, but most of them get larger amounts, so, I think it's one of those, we know we're going to, also, we, we try to hold the line the best we can, and I think a lot of the different positions with changes we've made have saved money, and so that the money we are spending on overtime, I think goes more directly related to services as opposed to, you know, frivolous things. A lot of it goes to training because it's unfunded, what required by the Municipal Police Training Council to send officers to in-service training every year, we have the taser training, the firearm certifications, first aid, you know, it just sort of goes on and on, we're training in mental health this year, which is a, I think, a good thing. So, that, that's, aside the salaries, that's our request for that. Expenses-
She should have gotten a copy of this.
Dave, why don't you talk about the recruit academy?
About the cost?
Yeah.
So, the recruit academy is, for any new officer that gets hired, they have to go through a mandatory six-month police academy. Traditionally, the officers have had to repay that money during the first year of their employment, it's not an option, they have to go to the academy, so the chief and I are looking to, to offset expenses and not have them pay it back out of their salary, but have the department absorb that cost instead.
When did all that start? Because I didn't pay to-
No, you didn't, no, it started, there's a whole series of things that, that started this, lateral transfers used to be done differently, so officers would just get hired by any old department, and they'd take a lateral, once they got trained, they would just take a lateral off of that, and the way the lateral system for civil service was set up, it didn't require, it didn't have to be authorized by both chiefs, in other words, I could just, well, if the chief doesn't agree with me, I can just resign, stay on my civil service list, and the new town can hire me, and what was happening is people were losing their offices, and the, the smaller towns became feeding grounds for the bigger towns, so they actually implemented this, this fee system, and I know during some of the contract negotiations too, going back quite a few years, and I said on the panel as a patrolman, is they wanted to increase the steps to five steps opposed from three, and part of their reasoning, and our reasoning, we agreed with them, is that while, while the officers in the academy for three to four months- the officers in the academy for three to four months, they're really not getting the service out of them if you were the full officers. So we agreed to go from three steps to top, before you reach top step, to five steps. And that was part of the offset. It was like a year after that that they put this law in and they just, the price has now gone from twenty-five hundred, the MBTA academy was forty-five hundred. So, you know, we're, we're asking an officer to take ninety dollars out of his check every week to pay it back in a year's time. We just thought that this is, what we would propose, I think, the, the concept is it would make them, as a condition of their employment, they would have to sign to stay on for a certain amount of time and.
Ten years?
If, we'll, we'll figure that one out. I, how long did you say, ten?
Yeah.
I don't know if they can go, but whatever, I think it's usually three to five is what they usually do. But it's, again, it's like we're talking, like in the modern world, you know, if you're, if some, if you're going to lose forty-five hundred dollars a year, you're going to go, for that first year, you'd consider going somewhere else.
You know, and, and let's also, you know, if, if you look and think about all the candidates that, you know, that we've interviewed, you know, people are coming out with, with bachelor's degrees, some of them working towards master's degrees. And, you know, if you think about the average amount of student loan debt that people have coming out of college, you know, we're, we're just making it harder for people.
Yeah.
And I think part of, you know, wanting to be an employer of choice and attracting and retaining the best talent is, is to be sensitive that this makes all the sense in the world to me. And I think that the stopgap measure of having a, you know, having some sort of a trigger if, if somebody leaves beforehand, I think that's fair and reasonable and, and that appropriately protects the town.
Yeah.
I, I think this is a great idea.
Thank you. And I think that's one of the things that the new generation of workers expects. This is what we're talking about, the change.
Yeah.
Why don't you, I'd like to, we're going to stop this meeting at nine o'clock.
Okay, sorry. We shouldn't have put, I shouldn't have put up your.
No.
Promotional testing, we recently changed the assessment testing process. It's a process where officers, when they apply to civil service, they take the exam. It consists of five live scenarios where they do role acting and they, they take regular police type calls. And they go through the scenario and they're scored by a panel of raters and that's how the, the scores are achieved. I think it's something that we've been trying to do because it really shows the officers that are out there doing the job, they know how to handle and it sort of brings the best out in them. And, you know, there's, there's training courses, you can go, but it also encourages, I think, the way that you're studying for this is going through the exams, but also going out there and doing the job and doing it in the field.
We just had them do two, we had the lieutenant's assessment and sergeant's assessment. The feedback we got from the officers and sergeants that took that process was overwhelmingly positive. They enjoyed the process too.
Good.
Excellent.
So that pretty much does it for our presentation. I, I would tell you that the recruit academy and the promotional test, if we don't have people that year, it's going to get returned back to the town. And so, or it would be encumbered over if we know we have recruit, other recruits coming over, but we just want to have it there in, in the event that, you know, we will have to have tests every other year. We'll do a lieutenant's test one year and sergeant's test the other year. But if the recruit money isn't going to be there, an average cost for the recruiter's bringing a recruit in is over five thousand dollars just in equipment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'd like to thank you as well.
Sorry to be a long-winded, huh? Sorry.
I'm pleased with the performance that I see and I've, I've had the opportunity to, you know, look at other departments in the, in the area. So it isn't just kind of my own subjective view of the town in isolation. It's, there's a lot of other towns and I think that we run a first-class department, so my compliments to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Animal Control Officer.
You can sit, you can do the whole thing. Sit down.
All right.
I'll talk too much, so.
Salutations, greetings.
I will speed mine up.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Hi, Leslie, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
So the FY twenty department request is seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars, which matches the town administrator recommended budget. And Leslie's budget starts on page one sixty-seven with the presentation starting on one seventy-A.
So I will kind of speed up my presentation for you. As you see here, the Animal Control Officer is in charge of any and all animal, animals that are in the town, whether that is domestic animals, marine wildlife, wild, regular wildlife, barnyard animals. I'm in charge of all of that and anything that has to go with it. Also, as the Animal Control Officer, I'm the Animal Inspector. Under that, that falls, doing barn inspections, kennel inspections, the licensing program, and also doing quarantines for bites and contagious diseases. Animal Control itself is more of what I spend the majority of my time handling because that's where the majority of my calls do come in. This year alone, I had quite a few different calls ranging from, and you can see in some of the pictures, I think, in the next slide, from wildlife calls, we had two foxes stuck in a well, to a very unusual, which was a first. We had a swarm of over a thousand bees down in front of Bel Chabella in a tree that myself and a beekeeper had to remove. We were able to get the whole hive except for maybe less than fifty out of that tree that evening. Also, we've had a cat that was stuck. We also had a cat that was stuck in an engine compartment. I've had a few horses that have gotten loose. One of them was a racing, a retired racing horse that made its way down Main Street. And then we also had another older horse that made its way down Main Street the opposite way, a different time. So it definitely varies for me in my calls. And then mixed in there are the dog bites, the quarantines. And then when I don't have that stuff going on, my priority is Bear Cove Park and making sure the off-leash program is running smoothly, which, as I've said in other presentations, things are going pretty well, knock on wood, is moving forward. Also, you can see in some of the other pictures as well, we've got the kennels in town. One further picture. I'm moving right along quickly. We've got kennels, we've got barns, this is a different assortment, and then, you know, quarantine dog in jail. But we've got quite an assortment of animals, whether it's kennels or barns. And then I guess we can move on to the next slide of my statistics for two thousand.
Leslie, could you, could you just, you had a picture, but you, could you just speak to coyotes for a minute?
Yes.
Because, you know, there's been an increase of coyotes in the area. We've gotten, you've gotten a number of calls from people saying, you know, as, as woods are being cleared out and different things are happening, increased coyote activity. Some frustration that, that, you know, residents who are finding that they don't, their pets don't feel safe in their yard, they don't feel safe in their yard, and saying, you know, what, what can we do about it?
I was going to actually speak about it in my goals coming up.
Great.
So I'll, I'll leave you. Yep, that's why I'm jumping through to get to those for you, no problem. So the calls, as we have up here, at six hundred and eighty-nine citations, eight quarantines, twenty-three loose dogs, twenty-one, roadkill pickup, fifty-six, barn inspections, fifteen, and I'm still working because it's the new year in my kennels. Last I had was six, but that varies, some people give up having the kennels, animals pass away, same with barns, some realize it's getting too expensive. So those are kind of my overview. So kind of the key initiatives and goals going forward. One of the big ones is the situation with the wildlife, and I've been actually already in talks with New England Wildlife and the environmental officers to set up. It can be kind of, not like a town meeting, but it's welcoming to any residents. We can either do it at the library here or even New England Wildlife Center, how to deal with and, and, and handle the coyotes in your yard, in your town, what to do when you see them. And also to give the residents a better understanding of what my role is, what the environmental police's role is, what the New England Wildlife's role is, and what's the best numbers to call to get help in those areas, plus other wildlife issues that people have, you know, if they have an animal under their porch or something, who they can call versus calling me, because that's not technically something I do unless it's sick or injured and causing a safety, a health issue.
Thank you.
Yep. Other things I would like to do, it's been a big topic tonight, is as we all know, the north side of town is going to be very busy soon. I was an ACO a few years ago that responded to the Avalon Fire in Quincy that was up in the Falls area where the, one of the complexes burnt. And they, they had, at first they thought they had it under control, but then they realized at the time, they didn't have a set plan for the animals and it was an animal-friendly apartment building. So they needed extra ACOs because they realized as the people were trying to get out of there, they were just grabbing the pets and going, which was great, but they didn't have carriers. They didn't have any of the leashes or anything like that. So we made sure we brought what we had to help hand those over to them. Also, and that's a big concern for me as we're going forward, because the majority, as I'm learning through the building department and police department, are going to be pet-friendly. So I want to work with all of those management organizations that are going to be in charge of the apartments to make sure we not only have in place licensing procedures and emergency procedures for all these pets that are coming to them, but also learn, figuring out a way to educate on, you know, welcome to Hingham, these are all our different parks in town and who's in charge of them, but especially like Bear Cove, this is our off-leash program. Here's a brochure, so you can understand before you partake in going to these parks with your dogs, this is what's expected as a dog owner. So even if it's a brochure handed to management when a person comes in and says, yep, I'm going to be leasing, owning, whatever, I have a dog with me, here you go, here's a welcome. So that's something else I want to take on. I'm also been working with Linden Ponds because they have become even more pet-friendly. They've had a situation where they had a mastiff move in and it's a hundred and twenty pounds. And that's the first situation that they've come across and they literally called me and said, what do we do? So I, so I realized they need help, so I'm helping them with that as we go forward. Because again, that can become a serious issue for both police and fire when they respond, if they're not aware that behind that door is sitting a hundred and twenty pound animal. Also, other initiatives or goals I would like to do going into the future is working with the local trainers and dog walkers as I'm seeing the world of dogs grow. And people are getting into the businesses of dog walking and training. I, I want to get into that community even more to discuss with them, to make sure they've got tags on their dogs, to make sure that, you know, what they're doing when they come to our parks is the best thing that they should be doing now that we have our program set up with Bear Cove, so that's something else. So, you know.
Right, very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Harbor Master.
I guess I'll just condemn my three-hour presentation.
Leslie's more, I know that as a officer of the court, you understand that.
Absolutely.
The FY twenty department request is two hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two with an additional request of eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six for a total of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighteen, which matches the town administrator recommendation. The Harbor Master budget starts on page one seventy-one with the presentation on one seventy-eight.
Go.
Okay, excellent. So I'll begin with basically what the, the mission and services are. Sometimes people think that the Harbor Master is a recreation job and that's actually not the case. We provide protection of the harbor as well as protection for the people and property on the harbor, specifically boats. What we do is we explain laws, we enforce regulations and policies governing, governing the navigable waters and also the islands and the shorefronts. We have five islands in town and roughly twenty-six miles of coastline. Mooring management is a significant part of what we do. We have fifteen, about fifteen hundred moored vessels in town, that's either on a mooring or in a slip. Each one of those needs to have a permit issued every year. We collect the revenue from that, we make sure that the moorings are inspected and all the vessels are properly registered with the state and so forth. So we handle about fifteen hundred mooring permits every year. There's another aspect of harbor management and that can vary from year to year. Right now, one of the big things we're working on is trying to get teed up for dredging, hopefully in the next year. We also offer safe boating classes, managing, help to manage, you know, like the, the bathing beach, sand movement, so that's a very diverse area of what we do. We also have shell fishing in town. We've been closed the last couple of years because the shellfish have been dying off, but that's another one of my responsibilities. And then something that's been continually increasing over the last couple of years is supervision of, you know, high school water sports, rowing and sailing. That's become, continues to grow over a year.
Just to have the discussion.
With, with this assignment of putting together this presentation, I was asked to, you know, put up some benchmarks and type metrics, like what we use to, to analyze the department. And one thing I've always tried to do is, you know, calls for service, that's what you see in fire and police, but for some reason that never really works out with us. You know, we do call a lot of calls into the station, but they don't always get logged. And then a lot of the work we do is also proactive, so we aren't necessarily waiting for an incident to happen, but we're out there, we notice something and we don't necessarily have a, a stop, but we have a friendly encounter, try to give some supervision, education and stuff like that. So a lot of things just don't get recorded, we'd be on the air constantly disrupting the, the patrol officers. So I tried to think some different things and this was the list that I came up. And it varies from year to year, so it's not really helpful to have really a pie chart or, or a graph or anything, but we talked about permits. Like I said, mainly we do a lot of mooring permits, but we also have permits for use of the boat ramp, we do shell fishing permits, so there's very, there's some other different permits there. And then violations, we actually do issue a significant amount of violations. We usually start out with a warning specifically for mooring enforcement. We issue a warning and then if they don't get the permit within two weeks, then we issue a violation. I think this year we, we, every year we do roughly, it seems to be pretty accurate, every year it's about two hundred citations that we issue. A lot of the time these get taken up, if they don't, then we issue demand letters and we'll take them into, to court for collection. We also, I also evaluate the number of boats on the waiting list. We don't want waiting lists to get too long, so we see the number of boats that are on a waiting list, then we have to look at our policies and procedures and see what we can do to try to decrease the number of boats on the waiting list and make sure that they're getting to the harbor and all the moorings are being used. And that also then reflects on revenues, which are something I try to make sure that we bring in the proper revenues. We also have a pumpout system and we have a pumpout boat. So there's a system on the town pier where people can do their own pumpouts and then we have the boat that'll go around and do pumpouts. You'll see that at the bottom here, there is a, a chart and you'll see that, you know, pumpouts in fifteen and sixteen were exceptionally high, that's too high. So we had some issues with the Hingham Shipyard where their system wasn't working.
Okay.
So we were having to cover for the entire shipyard. That's been addressed, I think, for the most part, their system's working. I think seventeen, eighteen are a little low. The boat, the pumpout boat was down for a couple of weeks each year. This year it was down, we had to replace an engine, so we shouldn't see that in the next couple of years. So I think we'll see it go back up a little bit, but it, it won't be as high as, as we saw in fifteen and sixteen, that was exceptionally high. Some key initiatives is continued presence in the water outside of the core nine weeks of the summer. We're trying to increase that. We have the dredging project coming up in 2020, which requires a lot of planning to get it going and then a lot of monitoring as it's being done. This fall, we changed our mooring management system from one vendor to another. It's still our system, but it's a different interface and I think this is much more user-friendly. And it has a bunch of different things that we're going to be able to use to help keep better statistics on what we do, which we've never really had a good system internally for us to use that works well for us. And then I think the greatest thing so far is the new office. We've been really socializing that and people are thrilled to see us down the harbor. It's not like they have to go up to the middle of town to, to find us, so that's worked very well. Now we're at salaries, we have two full-time personnel, myself and then head assistant Harbor Master. We have loving part-time personnel, one clerk that's part-time, and then the ten assistant Harbor Masters who work seasonally. We do have fifty-seven thousand dollars roughly for our expenses and that sounds like a huge amount of money for a small office, but roughly sixteen thousand goes to repair, maintenance of vehicles and grounds, eight thousand of that is just to keep one boat at a slip. We have twelve thousand dollars for our mooring, mooring management and then ten thousand dollars roughly for fuel. Out of the remaining stuff, we have porta potties and we actually pay for street lighting, so, you know, the, the money gets spent pretty quick. It's a pretty lean expense budget, I think. Additional requests for this year, just under ten thousand dollars for use and occupancy maintenance at our, at the Intermodal Building under our lease agreement. And then we'd like to increase the money for vehicle repair maintenance. increase the money for vehicle repair maintenance. We see that, you know, it takes money to maintain these vessels and keep them up and running. So we've been trying to do well with less money, but we really need to increase it a little bit.
Well, and when you're down a vessel in your peak season, it impacts your ability to, you know, meet your mission.
It does. And we only have three vessels to get on the water. So one goes down and it, you know, it makes it challenging.
I mentioned to Michelle as you were talking, Ken, first of all, thank you for, you know, not just the work you do, but for being proactive on the dredging program. And one thing I mentioned to Michelle is that, you know, with warrant articles due and things like that, we just, you know, I think when we talked about the dredging program, one of the things I said is, look, let's kind of see where we are and, you know, see if there needs to be any warrant article action for this year. I think the answer's probably no, but I'm gonna suggest that you connect with Tom and Michelle next week, just to sort of see where we are because, and I know there are a lot of different variables at play, but I just want to have us, ask ourselves the question of whether we want to insert any warrant articles this year. So.
I wouldn't say the answer is no. Actually, I'm working closely with town council on this. And Tom is aware he might not be at the forefront of his mind, but we are working on that. So I wouldn't say it's out of the question, but we're working on it, making sure that it gets done appropriately.
I appreciate that. January 20th is.
Around the corner.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You made it.
Excellent.
All right. You got one appointment or one issue?
Yep. Would you like a motion?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day alcoholic beverages license to Jennifer Lorette on behalf of Hingham Sports Partnership for the Hingham Sports Partnership Winter Classic fundraiser to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Saturday, February 1, 2019, from 6:30 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So what can we report?
I have three, but I'll make them quick. The first one is I'm very pleased to announce that Hingham has been awarded, or has been granted, a designation of a green community, which means that we are committing to reducing our municipal energy use by 20% over the next five years. And for this initial designation, we've been awarded a grant of $142,232. So we'll need to decide which projects we will be prioritizing with that first pot of money. I want to thank all the departments who helped gather the data for that, and especially Brad Moyer and the Energy Action Committee for their help in getting this initiative to where we are today. The second is, I just wanted to let the board know that the Hingham Police Department continues to receive the Traffic Enforcement and Equipment Grant Program from the state. Our initial amount right now is $1,400 to be used for overtime enforcement patrols this winter to focus on impaired driving. So that's very helpful. And the third one is to let you know that the Hingham High School Veterans Appreciation Club is hosting a Military and Veterans Appreciation Night in the gymnasium during the home wrestling match against Pembroke High School. So that will be on Wednesday, January 23, at 6:55 PM in the high school gym. And it's open for everyone, and there will be free admission and concessions for military and veterans. Thank you.
I have nothing.
I'll be brief. I think the town saw with its own eyes and ears tonight, the chiefs and the deputies of our police and fire present thoughtful presentations. I especially enjoy seeing the emphasis placed on growing future leaders from within each of the departments. I think nothing gives officers or firefighters more hope than the, you know, the belief that if they do their jobs and they do it well, there's a future for them within the department. And finally, just to comment on my colleague's announcement, I really think that the service that she's rendered to the town is extraordinary. And I'm referring to Karen Johnson in her earlier announcement tonight. That is true sacrifice in just an extraordinary way. I truly hope the town appreciates what it witnessed here. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Good night.
Good night.